But I mean, that's an example of what happens when people, you know, when correspondence happens individually.
Oh, that's why it's always with the threat. Always, always with the threat. You never kill the threat.
Well, not-
That way you can always backtrack, backtrack, you know?
Yeah, no, that's-
A lot of-
What I'm talking about, I'm not talking about, oh, okay. So, thank you, Matt. I would like to open the agenda Georgetown Planning Board, April 27, 2016. Planning Board meeting, Memorial Town Hall, third floor conference room. It's five past seven. Before we get into the agenda, just, we have correspondence we're going to be going through. We have a public hearing, Chaplain Hills, that we're just going to open so that we can continue. They've asked, they're not here this evening, so we'll just open the meeting and then continue it. And then we will go to Little Hills Homeowners Association. We'll also do any other concerns of planning board members, and then we'll end with the executive session for pending litigation. So with that, correspondence, as we've been doing it lately, there's nothing here that I need to talk about. Anybody have any questions, issues about correspondence? Okay. Vouchers, seeing none. We can go to Chaplain Hills, which we need to open the hearing, which was continued from March 9, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to reopen the OSRD for Chaplain Hills, continued from March 9, 2016.
Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And what we're also, what we're also opening is we have the preliminary subdivision as part of this. We're going to continue them both so that we don't have to refile for an add and whatnot. So I need a motion to open that hearing as well.
Was that a preliminary or a definitive?
Preliminary.
A preliminary?
Yeah. Yeah, so I need a motion to get that open.
Does it matter if that wasn't on the agenda or?
The agenda's not, it's not written quite the way it should be, but under the circumstances.
Second.
So a motion has been made, and it's been seconded, to also open, along with the OSRD, the preliminary subdivision plan for Chaplain Hills. Any discussion?
I'm just not clear on who made the motion, Mr. Chairman, for the record.
I did.
You made, you made the motion?
No, I did.
Tillie made the motion.
Tillie made the motion?
Okay.
Sounds good.
I'm clear on that now.
All right. So any more discussion?
Continuing to win.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so it's open. As far as continuing it, what are, what's the, what are the agendas looking like, Andrea, for coming up?
We have May 11th with Palmer Lane.
Yeah?
That's all.
And that's it?
What about the 25th?
Yeah, what's after the 11th?
The 25th.
Is there anything on that agenda?
I don't believe so, I'll check.
If not, my vote goes to the 25th.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to-
I'm sorry, was it?
It's open.
It's open, okay.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to May 25, 2016, at 7:15 PM.
Second. So a motion has been made, and it's been seconded, to continue the public hearing for Chaplain Hills OSRD and preliminary subdivision for May 25, 2016, at 7, what'd you say?
15.
7:15. All in favor?
We don't have any, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, discussion?
There's no deadlines for, at all whatsoever on this.
Well, the OSRD doesn't start until we start, close the hearing for that, and the other, we will, that's a good question. I don't think there, I don't think there's an issue with the preliminary. I'm trying to recall. I had asked John Eichman that question, I'm trying to think how he answered, and he said no. He said we're all set. I asked him that specific question. Do you, do you-
I think he said, um, yeah, uh, here we go. Let me just-
Yeah, that'd be good.
This is recommendation.
I just know that they've asked for, I think this is their third continuance.
I think it is their third now.
Yeah, well, so they, yeah, so I mean, they were, they dropped their plans off-
In January.
In January, and then they had a hearing in February, right? Where we opened it and continued it to tonight.
We continued it to March, to March.
March, yeah.
The one-
Written there, March, right in the, here.
Yeah, this is their third continuance.
This is the March we had one. February, now we had one.
That was the one that we continued, yeah.
As long as they're, well, we could close it, really, if you wanted to.
Yeah, you know, we could, we could, you know?
Always required that we have a hearing within 65 days because-
Yeah, we could, we could.
-that application indicates a special permit process, so.
We have to redo the postman publication. This email, Andrea, doesn't answer that question. I, I can dig it out, or you can trust me that that was John's answer to my question.
Excellent. And the bottom line is-
I have it in there.
If something like that is necessary before that date, Andrea could contact them and get a Form H signed.
Rob, this is in no way an attempt to question your memory or anything like that.
Please, questions.
I noticed that this is the third time that they've asked for this, so.
I'm with you. I know you're with me. They were on their way to the confirmation, I, you know, I think that's where they-
Here it is. "Rob, you do not need an extension of time now for the OSRD. The time requirement for reaching a decision on this application does not start to run until the public hearing has been closed, which is sometime off. As we discussed, it would be a good idea when the applicant does appear to request a written extension of time to act on the preliminary subdivision."
Very good.
And it's obviously not just interested. So, all in, did we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, to continue it. Go ahead. Okay, unanimous, continue, all right. Good, so that's that. Okay. See. So we are now going to go to Little's Hill Homeowners Association. I'm not sure who it was that was here to speak on behalf, oh, let me just, anybody here for Chaplain Hills?
Yes.
They are not showing up tonight. They've continued the hearing until May 25.
Have you amended their plans at all?
Nothing has changed.
No, they just continued again to beat you down a little bit. Hoping that you won't show up next time.
Disagreement, that's probably.
Bet they do it again.
And we have to get that, Andrew's got to get that mark.
Bet they do it again.
Well, they have to.
Really, they, I know, I kicked the about it spot if I was there. They always show up for three, four meetings.
Next, does it-
Way you're right out, beating you right down.
Well, well, so.
Okay.
You could introduce yourself for the record and-
Sure.
I'm going to sit in the audience because as a disclosure, I'm a butter to your project.
Sure.
All right, have a good seat.
Okay.
Are you, you going to ask questions?
I'm going to listen to you. You know I'm going to be tired.
Sure, so, James Ellison of the 11 Littleville Lane, I'm here on behalf of the Littleville Hill Condo Association.
Keith Corvo at A Littleville Lane, and we're happy to contact those associations as well.
So, just, we'll give a little background, I'm not sure how familiar you are with the specific development in Littleville, you know, stop me if you are, kind of say, you know, what we like to do, and you guys can kind of say.
Is this, what you're going to explain to us is probably just as good also for people who might be watching at home.
Sure. So, you know, Littleville, I think, was a, it was a special permit process in the late 90s, 97 or 98, for a 45-unit subdivision, and I think it was a planned urban development, whereas, you know, there were certain restrictions placed upon development that the original developer agreed to as part of going forward with that development. You know, so the project started in, you know, 2000, call, I think we finished our last house last year. Another topic, I believe, that order, there's still an open order of conditions between the developer and the town, which are not closed out, that are still outstanding. But that's another issue, not for tonight. So, one of the restrictions in that original covenant was that the roads were, the maintenance and snow plowing of the roads was to remain, you know, the, under the, in the hands of the condo associations that would be responsible for the removal of the snow as well as maintenance of the roads. So, as a stipulation, so the association does actually own the roads, but they grant the easement to the town and any individuals who, they have a right of way to pass over those roads. And there's a, there's conservation land in the back of the development, they had it through cul-de-sacs, so people have the right to go there, there's parking spaces that are open to public. There's also a soccer field that, you know, it's a UA soccer field where if there's a parking lot, people park there, they soccer. So, you know, so, I've lived there about five years, and, you know, currently, the process that we have is that, you know, we have a person with a pickup truck plowing roads, you know, it's uneconomical, and, you know, he does a, good job for, you know, one individual, and he has the ability to go out and kind of bargain with larger contractors to ask them to come plow roads. So, you know, we're willing, just wanted to back us on why the restrictions were placed in the deeds and the deeds of the original homeowners, and, you know, if the planning board are willing to negotiate removing those restrictions from the deeds as they stand.
Okay. So that, okay, that's a question?
That just summarizes it right to the point.
Okay. I don't know if anyone wants to start, if not, I'll start with a few questions, but I don't want to name the chair. So, to adopt a, to, to turn it into a private road, to turn the private road into the public road, we'll take a vote from the town, where the selectmen agree to put it on the warrant. So you're aware of that part of the process?
Yes.
Okay. Why, what is it about now that's different than when you bought the property that, I'm just curious, that's changed your-
Yeah, I don't think anything's changed, you know, in a full disclosure, you know, if you went back and read the documents, it's quite clear in the deeds, you know, if some actually took the time to print out all the deeds and go back, you know, if you look at your deed, you can follow it back through to the original application. So I think, you know, to answer your question, nothing has really changed on the fact that the development's complete now, we've had it for a couple of years, or, you know, we've been, I've been there a couple of years, and we just think the process is not really efficient or economical for any of the parties involved.
Yeah. Part of some of the questions that I, what I was wondering about, and I, I don't have answers for these, but before, obviously, the town and the town budget, you know, the constraints that we have with the, with the budget for the town, and not just snow removal, but the school district, you know, for example, they have eight, I think, full-time positions that are getting cut from the school system because of the, you know, the total budget that the town has. And so adding more cost to the town is something that I would, is, is an issue to, to talk about. The, part of the problem, I think, or challenges would be, how could you do something like this? I'm not going to sit here and just say no, and I'm not going to sit here and just say yes, but part of the challenge would be, how could you go through a process of making sure the existing conditions meet today's standards for the town and the town road design? I'm not sure what was allowed to be done and what was not allowed to be done, and it would be a very complicated process to verify that. You'd have to hire a technical review agent to go out. They would want to go in and take some cores out of the road in different spots to verify that the installation of the road is consistent with today's standards. Again, not knowing what was part of, what was put in as part of the private versus public, the whole issue of drainage and how that's working. So there, there would need to be, and I'm only speaking for myself, there would need to be a cost outlay in order to verify that that road is equal to a new road today under the standards, I would think, before the town would even-
But we're not asking the town to take over ownership of the road. We're looking for the, the plowing during the winter.
Well, that would have, that would be for a public road, because it's a private road now.
Well, I will say also, we've had meetings with the selectmen, also, to the extent you're aware, I've passed along the meeting, the requests that we get sent to them. And, you know, one of the things we discovered is that there's actually over 20 towns in Georgetown that are currently unaccepted, so in regard to, you know-
How many roads, you mean, in private ways?
I'm sorry, no, there, there are, yes, there are, there are over 20, 20-
Well over that.
-in the town.
Well over that.
By the town.
Well over that.
The town still provides services to those, so I think, you know, aside from our, this restriction RD, I think we're similarly situated to those roads.
A lot of those roads are, I think, are grandfathered. A lot of those roads are part of an old history, so I'm not sure it's, it's a, you know, if that's, how much of that is accurate, what you're saying? I think a lot of those roads are grandfathered roads, it's just why they plowed. There's also, that's a whole discussion in and of itself, whether the town should be plowing private roads.
I agree.
I think, I think they apply private, I think they plow private roads when there's an emergency, when something's not right and a fire truck needs to get in and it hasn't been plowed.
For part of that reason, that's, that's not accurate, because we have, we met with the highway supervisors here, and he said they plow unaccepted roads currently.
Well, that might be, that might be some of the ones that have been grandfathered, so I'm not sure which ones you're talking about, but I'm, so, any event, it, it's a complicated issue, no question about it. And I don't know how, we certainly can't change the permit. I don't see how we could go back and-
Well, there are two permits.
Consider, right, there were-
There's the special permit-
Right, it was special permit.
For the planned unit development, that's a special permit, that's one, and there's also the, the standard subdivision, definitive subdivision permit. They both mimic that language, all roadways, drainage structures, facilities, and appurtenances are to remain privately owned. The applicant or his successor in interest shall be responsible for maintenance, repairing, and snow and ice control of the roadways and the drainage system. That's reflected in the PUD, it's reflected in the regular subdivision, and more importantly than that, even though these are recorded, both recorded at the registry of deeds, it's also reflected in the covenant. And I don't know if you're familiar with what a covenant is, but a covenant is like a restriction on the individual lot that you have, landwise. It's like a, it's an encumbrance, it's like an easement, it's like a diminishment of your property value, it's one of the sticks in your private property rights that-
Sure.
-you've given away, or in your case, that you willingly purchased without that stick.
I certainly, I totally agree with that, you just said, I think it goes back to its, you know, there's two parties involved, either the town and the development, so I think certainly covenants can be amended by-
Which I don't disagree with, but I guess, and forgive me for putting it quite so bluntly, but what does the town get out of, in the benefit of that? I mean, so you're, you being the, the other party would obviously receive a benefit.
Sure.
What's the benefit to the, to the other party, the town?
Well, certainly, so I think, you know, when, whenever units sell our house in our development, you know, one of the things the purchase would look at are what the condo fees are a month, and a large majority of that condo, majority of that condo fee goes towards plowing. So as the retail, the property values rise, they were receiving a return in additional tax revenue.
I mean, is there, do you, have you done research, would you, would that bear out on the property values, that your property value, for example, is-
Yes, sir.
-a diminished versus the property value down the street that's on a public way?
We could, if that's something that you guys, you know, would like to see going forward.
So what you're saying is that the increase in your property value and the property value of each, each property would accrue to the town additional taxes, but the primary, I mean, that value to the town is apportioned by the value to you. You're getting the benefit for this, and the only benefit the town gets is the speculative increase in, in our tax revenue.
Have you, have you, have you had any discussions with the highway, and I don't, again, it's private, so the town can't plow it as a private until there's a certain law that the town has to adopt, so you're aware of that?
Yes.
The town hasn't adopted that, hasn't adopted that yet, but-
Can the town adopt that with the covenant in place?
The town, it's, it's, it's a-
Any ten citizens, after that bylaw was passed, point that covenant out to the Attorney General and have it overturned?
It has, the town can't, I'm not an attorney, but the, the town-
Yeah, but I don't know.
The town, it's sixty, it's sixty-something, sixty-something, and the town, unless the town adopts that-
Oh, what?
-the town cannot plow.
You can't vote for that, is that the thing, yeah?
Correct.
We can't even vote for, yeah.
Correct, that, that's what I'm saying there, so, what I was saying is, so, so whether or not the town can even take over the plowing of the road, which is a question like in and of itself, which is a tough one, did you have any conversations with, with Peter with regards to having him do the plowing, assuming the town can plow it? But you guys pay him to do it so that it is efficient and effective? See, what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to see if there's, if there is a way that it doesn't cost the town any more money by taking it on, and then if all the legal channels are properly followed, you know, I-
For the condo association to contract with-
Contract with the town.
With the town.
With the town, to, to plow it, yeah. And so maybe it still stays private, and I don't know if it wants to be public, wants to be private, but if it stays private, then you don't have to worry about the standards of it, per se, you know?
Right, it's a simple, it's much simpler than-
It's a little simpler, and if it's a way for, I can only imagine, it, I'm sure it is a challenge, and I, I get it, you guys knew what you bought, and that argument, everybody understands that, but I certainly understand how, after a while, trying to get people to plow it, and people doing a good job, not a good job, and you guys are busy, you're working, and blah, 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 and if there's a way to make it work for both, for both the town and both you, you know, I would be open as just one member to listening to that.
Is that something we have to have the conversation directly with Peter with, or does he have the authority to enter into a-
No, he cer-
-agreement up like that?
He cer, he certainly doesn't, I don't think, and again, I'm not an attorney, and it would seem to me that the selectmen would be the people, and you're probably feeling like you're getting jerked around, going from board to board.
If you do, let me know how much it costs, because I wanted to do my driveway too.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, in that sarcastic response there-
No, I really wouldn't pay him to do my driveway.
In that response, I mean, what, what Harry is, is implying is that it opens up a can of worms too for Peter, in terms of, you know, it may be more than just taking on the plowing, he may need to hire a person to take on, because then maybe everyone else wants to do it? And if everybody else wants to do it, and they all want to pay the town to do their work, and it, and Peter can then hire a per, whatever, and financially it works and makes sense, it's a possibility, I suppose.
One of the first things that you mentioned is that, because you're a fairly small development, you have a hard time contracting with some of the bigger, bigger agencies out there. One of the other things you mentioned is that there's a number of other private roads in town that are probably facing the same issue. Maybe there's some ability for the, for a group of you to, group of these private roads to contract with one of the bigger agencies.
Well, we're saying, I think, most of the private roads aren't plowed by the town, that's the issue.
They're unacceptable roads that are plowed.
Just, just to go back to that, you mentioned a grandfathering of unaccepted roads that are plowed by the town.
Yeah.
Can you kind of expand on that? What is this grandfather, how, like, how can we find that out? Is that, it's like a statute or a town by law, or kind of, I'm not aware of that specifically.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that list-
The can of worms you're opening.
Where is that list?
I was going to say, use the word can of worms.
The can of worms you're opening.
Well, so, for example, in your, the decision, it spells it right out, and that it's a private way, you know, and not going to be taken care of by the, by the town, let's-
Yes, I understand.
I think the way you would probably look that up, at least for starters, is to go to the, the same type of documents for each of those roads, and see if that same language is, is included in there.
Yeah, so we've had, we had discussion with the selectmen, and they, they agreed that the town is not only roads, and that they plow them.
No, I understand, but, so you have that specific covenant in your documents.
Oh.
The question would be, does that same covenant exist in these other, in the, in the other subdivisions? And chances are, they probably do not, and that's probably why the town is plowing them. That would be my best guess.
Probably allows them to.
Right.
But they're listed as private roads.
I understand, but again, there's this very specific covenant in your master documents.
The next six pages.
The question is, does that same covenant exist in these other roads that may or may not be older than yours?
Where's this coming from? That's probably just, um, you know-
So I guess aside, aside from the specific covenant in a deed, or, you know, going back to the question of why the town plows their unaccepted roads, is there any additional, you know, information you can provide on that?
I don't think that falls under our-
Maybe the Historical Society can help you with that. Maybe it was a political thing, we have an elected highway surveyor. So think back and think about what highway surveyors of yesteryear would have wanted to do, to get reelected.
I'm not discounting that.
Oh, I, I know that's why.
But I would also venture a guess that this is just a covenant that made its way into our, into our standard documents at some point, and maybe 1998 was the year.
Oh, absolutely. I have no doubt in my mind that the covenant was specifically placed in there. The, the special permit decision calls for that covenant to be laid in there, and I was on Calcom at the time that a lot of this stuff was happening. I don't know what the planning board was doing, but I do remember that a lot of waivers were made, and when, when you're permitting a subdivision, there's a, there's a given a take with the developer, and most developers need waiver, and the board pretty much gives and takes for a waiver, it's not a quid pro quo, but it's something willingly given, and basically what happens is, when the board gives things up, they get things in return, and that's a very, very powerful thing to get for a town, to know that all your streets and all those lots and the, the open space that was given, and the fact that that surge treatment plant that you all flushed into would never, ever be part and, and be a burden to this town.
Well, the sewage treatment plant is not an issue at all, we're just talking specifically about plowing roads, that's not even part of this conversation.
It's a ball of bundle, and it's, it's like a ball of yarn, you can't pull one out without getting the rest of the thread. It was a negotiation made 20 years ago, and-
So are there any specific waivers that you're referring to, like, with regard to the development?
As one, a planning board member, if I was being asked to, when this subdivision finally closes out and it's all done, and the monies are actually returned to the developer from the tripartite agreement, which they haven't yet.
No.
When that actually occurs, and this is finalized, at that point, for that reason, I hope you don't understand why I would not vote to change it in any way, because I don't know what five people 20 years ago negotiated and what they gave up to get that condition.
So I, and I'm just, I'm just going to, you know, I'll just let you know where I am with that. I'm not, as I said to begin with, I'm not yes or no at this point in time. I don't want to burden the highway department with any additional work, they're already overstretched, all the departments are overstretched, and I don't want to add any money at all to the cost for running the town, I couldn't support that in any way. If there is a way, and then there are two issues on the table, one is the issue of private road, public road, the other is the issue of just plowing it as is, as a private road, and they're both different. If there is a way that your group can, can come up with a, some, some arrangement with the town that the highway department is happy with, and that the selectmen are okay with, and all the legal crap is meant, you know, I'd consider that, because then it seems to me, you know, what Harry's talking about is all true, in terms of the decision-making process that went into approving that plan, there were reasons why some things happened that might not have been allowed to have happened otherwise, if it had been a public road. But the private's been up and running for a long time, and as long as the road would meet today's standards, which was the other part for me, you know, then for that whole question of turning it into public, be something to, to talk about. And that's just me. That's just, I don't think you're going to get any answer tonight.
That's fair, that's fair.
I don't know how you guys are. Might be the best you're going to get tonight, must-
Yeah, no, I, this looks, I mean, it really looks like a-
I mean, it's obvious, the developer cut some great deals to whoever was on the board at that time to, to get the deal passed. Now we're the homeowners trying to live with it and trying to make it more feasible for for everybody who's living there. And trying to see what options we have. I mean, obviously, you brought up a great one of seeing if the town would plow it, if we paid them directly. Great option for us, if that's something Peter would entertain.
Someone like this gentleman said too, like, it'd be something with the town, right? We also have the soccer field on the town, that there's things that potentially we could negotiate with the town to make the parties feel like they're getting something from an agreement, right? So whether it's paying the town on a yearly basis, or making improvements to the soccer field, things like that, then maybe the town gets something from it, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, so just keep in mind, as you're moving, as you move forward with this, put yourself in the town's position, and think of, I mean, the things that come up for me, we do not have any more money to spend anywhere. So the money issue, what it costs to do it, is huge. The proverbial opening a can of worms, other projects wanting to do the same thing, you know, that kind of precedent, and what it means to the town potentially, you know, think about that, and how you respond to that. And there was a third component to that, which I forgot. I'll think of it later. So, I'm just trying to not say no, not say yes, and see if there's some reasonable thing here.
Okay.
Who are you? Who are you? Could you introduce yourself at the record, please?
Yes, I'm Tilly Evangelist at 10 Volpait Road, and I'm in a butter to this Little Hills project. I sympathize with the neighbors. I think it should be plowed by the town. However, there is a process that probably they should have an attorney of their own to help them find a solution. But as far as the planning board is concerned, the only thing I think, in my mind, that we can do is a modification to the special permit. The conditions are placed on the special permit side of that decision, not on the subdivision one. Our subdivision doesn't imply anything about accepted street, other than the road has to be done if it is accepted. It's not a requirement to have it accepted. I think that, if they wanted to go the route, that the only thing that I can see we can do is the modification, and that would have to be the person who originally applied for the special permit. That would be, I think, Spears-
Camelot Realty Truck.
Camelot, and all of those people would be the ones to come to us to modify, and then if the board so chooses to remove that section, just take it off of the special permit. That's about all I can see the planning board is responsible for doing.
That they have any authority.
That's about it. That's the first step. As far as what you're referring to, that would be, I think the selectman told you, 200 signatures, getting it on the ballot, all that, because they cannot-
Oh, please, question.
Because they cannot appropriate any money to do that until it gets to the budget and town meeting, as I understand it. I really think this is pathetic. I'm certainly not for private roads. Grandfathered or not, I think it's ridiculous. But on the other hand, I don't want to see the town be responsible for paying for, to correct this problem. This is an 18, 19-year-old approval. People have been living with this for a long time, and, you know, I really think it's too long. And that's about it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there's a correction, can I say that, Tilly, you said that it wasn't in the definitive decision. I have the definitive decision right here.
It's the special permit.
It's in the special permit, yes, absolutely correct. And it is also in the definitive, where it calls for a recorded covenant as to a perpetual private roadway status, and to provide that snowplowing, roadway maintenance, access, et cetera, shall be provided.
That's true.
And it also says, later on, the terms and conditions of approval are binding on the heirs, assigns, and successes and interests.
I think-
That's the definitive.
But your special permit, I think it's-
I don't want to, I don't want to get into our debating this now, okay?
I just want to point out, it's in, you have to change two decisions.
But I, but I think Tilly's, I think Tilly's point that she was trying to make is still spot on. And that aside, the responsibility that the board has is only with those decisions, and that we can only change-
Covenant.
Yeah, and that's, and so I think her point was, is legit in that regard, so.
Right, and that's kind of one of the reasons we're here tonight, is, you know, back to where we started, I feel like the conversation got sidetracked a little bit.
Yeah.
But, so, you know, in order to remove that covenant, that's, we'd like to negotiate with the planning board, that's something that's within your power, you know, regardless of the cost, and the highway supervisor, and the selectmen appropriating funds, I guess. So are there any steps that, you know, concrete steps that we can take from between here and, you know, the near future, that would, you know, move the process forward of getting you to remove those covenants? Because I understand covenants are, you know, run with the land, yes, I'm an attorney also. Certainly, anything can be negotiated. You can change any covenant you want, parties negotiate all the time. So, you know, with that being said, I know people have different decisions, you know, people have their own opinions, but, you know, is there anything that we can do to put it upon the planning board, to give you more information, to bring it to a vote where the planning board say, yes, we'll remove the covenants? No, we will not remove the covenants?
I'm ready to vote right now, not to remove.
On that, on that particular issue, the only way I would be comfortable removing the covenants is if I had a full understanding of what had been put in place and why, as far as the approval process is concerned.
And so, the follow-up to that question is, you know, how do we determine that? Like, we've discussed here tonight a negotiation process and-
The only way, the only way I can think of how you would determine that is, you would have to go back through all the meeting minutes, you would have to go back through the approval process at that time. I don't know if they were recording anything on tape at that point, they, I don't know if they had anything-
I don't think they had footage of this.
They used to have a little recorder. I don't know where those tapes might be. You'd have to recreate the history, and it would have to be verified, so that I'm sitting here and I'm saying, okay, I now understand all of what the town gave up in order to let this development happen, what the town got in return for it, before I would even dare consider changing what had been approved.
And you've mentioned negotiations and things like that. I mean, is there some, something that you have in mind as far as yearly stipend, or what?
I think we're open to anything. Like I said, we pay, you know, I'm sure we pay a lot more for this guy for his pickup trucks than it would cost the highway department, you know, per employee basis to spend. You know, we have about a mile of roads, I'm sure it would take them 20 minutes as they drive down Volpait to turn down our street and go up Canterbury. But certainly, we're open to negotiating.
I mean, be that as it may, you bought what you bought. The town is, you're asking the town, one way or another, to, to take that expense on. And the town, you've got to give the town a really solid reason for doing that. It's unfortunate that you have to, you have to come up with this dough, but that was the deal. And I lived next to what was a junkyard, and I, I bought knowing that was a junkyard. And I've gone through all kinds of processes to try to influence what takes its place. And I appreciate the ass pain that you're experiencing, pardon me, because it's pretty heavy. But, you know, there was nothing in my deed that says, and there'll be a junkyard next door, you know, or that I'm going to be responsible for any expenses. So, you know, I really think you need to make a bulletproof case that it's in the town's best interest to incur this additional cost.
I, I think, I mean, I wish there was, I wish there was some direct answers that we could give you, and I think unfortunately, there isn't. And that a lot of it is going to fall on your shoulders to, you know, come up with a strategy based on the different boards and how they're responding, if it's something you, you know, that you want to pursue.
If we did have something in mind, what should we do for next steps? If we did think that we could come up with a, offer something up here?
You answer your question. I, I mean, I'd want to hear from Peter, what he anticipated the cost would be. I think that would be at least a place to start, because-
Go shopping.
Do we, do we want to do this, as Harry just said, that I'm ready to vote? Do we want to have a straw vote that says we are, as a board, open to someone making a presentation to consider, you know, amending those permits?
I can tell you right now, this is a special permit, you need a supermajority to override the special permit. I'm going to say no. I cannot imagine, I cannot imagine how 45 people, 45 properties balances out with 2,900 to the benefit. The greater good is not with taking that money.
The only way I can see that is, if Peter said, if Peter said that it was going to cost the town X, and they said, well, we'll pay you X plus 5.
Right.
That's not hurting the town in any way, that's not any detriment to the 2,900 other homes in town. It's actually a benefit.
And in fact, I don't want to, I don't think-
It's a detriment to me, because that's one pass that he doesn't make in front of my house, because it's only 24 hours.
Well, what if?
And if he's busy doing their roads, but he's not doing mine.
But he's subcontracting too. The thing is, we don't really have the information, I don't think, to make any kind of call on this, any more than you do. And we're not in a position to strategize for you. I would say Peter was probably the first person to talk to. And really, you know, your association probably should hire a lawyer and try to figure out how to navigate this. I don't know how to navigate it, and I don't know that anybody-
And we understand all that, you know, we've been to the selectmen, we've been here now, so I think, you know, like, one of the specific, you know, asks that we can have of this, you know, planning board is that we agree we have this covenant in our deeds. And so, you know, we're here before you guys say, are you willing to, you know, listen to, if we, if we go there, and we ask, you know, we test, get an engineering study done of our roads to show they're, you know, have granite curves, they're 50 feet wide, they're sloped X, and then we go to Peter Durkey and we say, it would cost Y amount of dollars to plow our one foot.
I'm going to buy you a new truck, Peter, and a new guy to drive it specifically for the town.
Sure.
Hypothetically.
And who better than Peter to know whether he has the time in a 24-hour period to do this, or if it would take him three additional staff?
He manages his resources in order to-
And maybe, maybe it's a way, I mean, this is just thinking out of the box, maybe it's a way for the highway department to generate some more revenue for the town. I don't know. But I want to back to what Harry said, because I think it's important. Because it is a special permit, and I don't even know how you go back, and to go back in time to an old, what is it, 98?
98.
98. I don't even know how technically, legally, you go back and do that, but let's just say you can, you go back.
It's still, ironically enough. Never given the money back.
So, you do need a supermajority vote for the special permit, which I think that is a correct statement.
Of the planning board.
Of the planning board. Now, with Tilly recusing herself because of being in a butter, you need-
These four.
All four. And what you just heard from Harry is, he was saying he would not support it. So what he, what that's telling you is that even if the three of us voted to your case, it's not going to go anywhere. And it would be a shame for you to go out and spend money and hire people to do something. I think I'm stating that correctly.
I just was trying to tell you that.
Yeah, no, I mean, it seems like the best option for a bull's eye is to approach Peter and see if there's a value for him to plow the road, and it, maybe, maybe it's 15,000, 10,000, whatever, and it's a premium that he gets, and he can allocate those funds to another part-time person, or-
Another truck, or whatever.
I'm sorry, with all due respect, I just want to make sure you understood that last thing that he just said, is that we need all four of us here to vote yes. But that's to take over the roads. This would be to subcontract.
That would be to amend the special permit.
Yeah, forget about amending that, we know that's not going to happen, but this will allow us to subcontract over the town.
You can contract anybody you want.
Correct.
Your association could have, contract with anyone whom they wished to contract.
Including Peter Durkey.
If that's legal.
And you have to, you have to verify the legality of that.
Peter would, as well. We have no legal restriction not to contract with somebody, so then he would have the legal restriction imparted by the town.
It's not, it's not under ours, but I guess what I'm just going to say there is that, keep in mind, or keep putting yourself in the town's position, where the town does not have any money to spend on trying to make something like this work. So it would behoove you if you, to, if that was the course you wanted to take, is that you're paying for the attorney to put this information together, to verify that the town can or can't do this, and then it makes a lot less work for the town to do.
The question is the bottom line, what's in it for me, as the town? If you say what's in it for me, is that your property values increase, that's not a very strong argument, I don't, to me, anyway.
In turn, which would increase the taxes that we pay.
It's just not as strong an argument.
Does the restrictions prohibit abatements by the 45 homeowners?
I'm not following you, I'm sorry.
The deed, does the deed restrict the 45 homeowners from requesting an abatement for the value of our property by not being plowed by the town, therefore reducing the amount of taxes that the 45 homeowners are paying to the town?
I have no idea.
I didn't read anything like that, any of them. Yeah, that's a question for the assessor.
Okay.
Let me know how you make up.
So I, I think that's, I think that's the best that we're going to be able to do right now.
And how long will the planning board terms? How does that?
Five years.
Well, and I think, one, I think, and I think-
Five, five, five.
All five? To that point, to that point, there's a seat up. Although I think it's too late, although you can get right in, if you get enough, it's a lot of work. You could be, you could run for planning board, I think, position now. There's a seat that's coming up, right? Isn't there a seat coming up?
There's an associate.
Couldn't vote for it. He would be sitting next to me.
No, no. He couldn't, he couldn't-
But he's at least up there helping you guys, right?
He couldn't vote for it, but I mean, then he, then he, then he just raised that question, vote of the planning board and terms and whatnot, and we need people. No question about it, we need, we need people to get involved with the town.
No kidding for an associate, an alternate.
An alternate, that's what we need.
Okay. Sorry, we'll save your time.
Yeah.
And all?
Thank you.
Step in, would. Planning board members step up.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. So, we just have any other concerns of planning board members and/or public, and then we're going to go to executive session, but, so, when is town meeting? May what?
May 2nd.
May 2nd. So we have, what, three warrant articles? Is that correct? We have three warrant articles on this year, two, just two? All right.
Yeah, we somehow dropped the, so, no, the groundwater protection district math adoption.
Yeah, that's lost.
Which recommended to town, we somehow, they never made it to the water.
Never made it.
Oh, so, I'm sorry, I was calling that much. What is the, what are the two there?
It's the, it's the water, stormwater and affordable housing by law, right?
Oh, you can, I can't figure that out yet.
Stormwater and what's the other one?
Just the one, just the one, yeah, just that one.
I thought it was the two water-related ones, and it's-
No, we lost that one. That one did, that's the one that didn't make it.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah. So, Howard Park.
Well-
Must have blown off the desk when he ran out the door.
Well, uh-
Maybe the selectman will be kind enough to take it up in the fall, and we can hold back during again.
So, in any event, I just, we have that one. And I think that was, I just wanted to mention that town meeting coming up, and then, thanks for clarifying, now that we have more than one. Okay, hopefully-
This is the planning board?
Yep.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll get town pla-
Well, we're still here.
Huh?
We're still here, what are you interested in?
I'm here to protest the dirty houses to be built off Chaplain Hill.
So that, that hearing was continued to next month on the 25th, May 25th.
Okay, you're going to send out a file of letters again?
We're not going to talk about that project tonight, so you're not missing, you're not missing anything.
All right, good, I just, it's been a 24-hour meeting.
Off the hook.
Mr. Chairman.
So, yeah.
I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation, and with the proviso that we will not be returning to public session.
That is correct. Second?
Second.
So this is a roll call vote? Sir?
Yeah, aye.